Before we get started, we've got about another minute, minute and a half. I got eight individuals I'd like to recognize real quick. We have a youth leadership pickings class here. And welcome. Good to have young members of Pickens County here with us today. And I want you to raise your hand, stand up, or whatever, if you'd like. But we're gonna have you on camera right here. Adam Massey. Ashley Hamby. Ms. Worley. I'm not gonna go to the first one. Jacey Moss. Julianne Payne. Julie Roper. Carrie Ash. First Carrie Ash. Back under that air she is. And Shannon Barton. I want to thank y'all for being here and good luck with the leadership picking. Hope y'all will do something. Now, if your instructor doesn't believe you were here, try to watch nopickings.com or Fitch News or whatever. We've got stuff covered on that. Oh, man. Well, ladies and gentlemen, it is now 5:30. At this time... At this time, I'm gonna ask for a moment of prayer. And we have Ms. Terri Coverland.
Yes, sir.
Please, if you will, everybody stand.
Oh, my goodness, you honor me. Thank you. Thank you, sir. I stand here with you today on behalf of the National Day of Prayer. And I invite you to mark your calendars for May the 4th to remember that day, to pause and remember and pray for our wonderful esteemed leaders here, our community leaders, our state leaders, our governor, our president, and our world. And it is a day where we can remember in Christ's name. Let us pray. Gracious God and Heavenly Father, we are so thankful we live in your country and we carry the liberty and freedom that you have given us from the time we founded this great nation. Father God, we just thank you for the men and women who are leading us here today and speaking and providing wisdom and guidance to us as we are a great city, a great city and a beacon on the hill. Let us be light that shines and joy in the morning. In Jesus' name, amen.
And while we're standing, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna ask youth leadership, they will all together as a group do the pledge of allegiance for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of any justice for all.
Thank you. May we see? All right. All right, we're gonna have a couple of amendments to the agenda. One of them, we have finally got all the bid packages in and everything been gone through for the approval of a generator, new generator for this building in the 911 system. I'd like to go ahead and try to get that on the agenda before we go ahead and get it ordered. That was the first one. That'll be item F, if it's approved. Item G, the park at Yellow Creek that Ms. Denny has been working on, I think she wants to make a statement on that. I'd like to go ahead and get that one on the agenda also. And then, item H, I'd like to have Chief Elrod, you wanna talk about the ambulances now that you got all your big packages in, on the new ambulances, we'll get that, finally get that rolling. So, there was a contract on the new ambulances. If I can get approval of the agenda with those three additions, I need a move in a second for that.
So, move.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of the number saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right, those will be done. I'm gonna try to keep things over. All right. Brings us down to item number five on the employee recognition. This is a part of the program that Ms. Denny, Mr. Denny has started and has turned out to be a very successful part, to recognize the employees of Pickens County. At this time, Ms. Denny, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Sure, thank you. Okay, this is my favorite part of the evening. It's always wonderful to recognize deserving people. And Pickens County has wonderful long-term employees. First, with the fire department, we have William S. Callahan, 10 years of service. And also with the fire department, 10 years of service, we have Jody R. Collis. Congratulations. We appreciate you. We'll get your pen to you later. Okay? All right. And 10 years in the fire department, Michael S. Noonie. Is Michael with us? And we have a big one, Probate Court, 20 years, Scotty H. Prove. If y'all would step back up for a picture, that would be wonderful.
No, I'm gonna stand up.
And if you, anybody would like any of their family, if they're here, that's fine too.
Can you all maybe turn yours around so we can see the front? Is that one?
There you go. I'll touch something later.
I'm sorry.
Am I gonna lift something?
This is not on the agenda. I'm gonna break the protocol for just a second. Ms. Deborah.
Yes, sir.
This young lady is retiring April the 12th.
May the 12th.
May the 12th, I'm sorry, May the 12th. How many years she been in the county?
Almost 25. And I was 10 years with local education. So, I'll be here almost 25.
So, she'll be getting a deserved rest from these hectic days that we have here. But also, along with that, Ms. Lisa Thompson will be, I'm gonna say replacing, will be trying to fill her shoes. So, I just wanna make that announcement. It'll be a little more formal here as we go down the next few weeks, but Deborah?
Yes, sir.
All righty, that was... And now, at this time, Ms. Fate, we come to the financial report.
Okay. It doesn't seem to be working. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, did it come on?
Well, it's on, but it's not, I can't see it. I'm sorry. Yeah, I've had the lights open.
I don't play that.
It's on, but, oh, well. I'll say these numbers and y'all can just remember. I have a test, definitely.
Lights back on. Yeah, some lights back on.
Sorry. Okay, so this is the, your financial report for the period ending March 31st, so it's three months of our fiscal year. And the expenditure budget should be at 25% or less. The total revenue, of the total revenue budget, we've collected $3,451,367. That's 13.5%. And that percentage will lag behind because the biggest part of our revenue is property tax. That doesn't come until the end of the year. On the general government functions, the total expenditures are, the total budget is The total expenditures were $653,855, and that's 18.52%. For the judicial, the total judicial budgets are $3,612,808. Total expenditures were $772,400, and that's 21.37%. For public safety, the total public safety budgets are $12,872,709. Total expenditures were $2,948,727, and that's 22.91%. The public works, total budget amount is $3,141,113. Total expenditures were $956,676, and that's 30.46%. And on the road department, that is a little bit over the allowable budget. The road department is 33.48, but that's because of the expenditure for the bridge replacement, that was a huge capital, capital outweigh item. It's not a recurring item, so their budget will adjust.
We had a bridge on west, east Price Creek Road that washed out during the flood, back this time last year, and we just have received the federal monies as of two months ago. So, we were able to replace that bridge. What was the final cost? It was nearly $300,000.
Almost $300,000. We got $125,000 from the front end.
Henceforth, that's why Kim, Kim Quinns' budget on public works has run over just a little bit.
Okay, the next departments are Health Department Senior Center and the MATS program. Those budgets are $795,197, and the total expenditure is $152,506. That's 19.18%. Culture and Recreation budgets are $931,111. Total expenditures are $201,097, and that's 21.6%. For Housing and Development, total budgets are $614,573. Total expenditures are $128,287, and that's 20.87%. So, of the total expenditure budget of $25,498,859, we have spent $5,813,151, and that's 22.8% of the budget. For the enterprise funds, the water department, their budget is $2,143,800, and they've spent $338,650, or 15.8%. For the airport, their budget is $396,386, and they have spent $97,916, and that's 24.7%. The reports went out to all the department heads and elected officials on April 10th. And overall, the general fund budget is under budget about 2.2% for that, for this time of year. Any questions?
I don't have any. I want to apologize if I wasn't able to bring them up on the, on the wall here, but they will be on the county website. I'm gonna look at the numbers on that one.
Are the audits finished?
They're, they're finished with all the elected officials field work. And if our field work, I actually got a draft copy of the audit yesterday. So, we're well on our way. We have until June 30th to finalize it and get it to the state, but it looks good.
Any issues or anything? All right, any other questions on that one? All right, excuse me, my voice will hold up. That'll bring us down the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, item A, we signed, and pardon me, I'm not gonna read all these proclamations that we've done on, my voice is not gonna hold out. But anyway, item A of the consent agenda, we signed the National Donate Life Month proclamation. That was in the Pickens County Progress. We've also, on item B, signed the Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation. Item C, we signed the Child Abuse Awareness Month proclamation. Item D, we signed the Crime Victims Right Week proclamation. And then, item D, we signed a joint proclamation for Health Fair Day. If anybody would like to take these home and read them, I would like to make a copy of it, but I don't think my voice is gonna hold out to do all that, unless you two would like to, like to read these proclamations and take a copy. Yes, sir. All right. Then that, excuse me, that brings us down to item number eight under oil business. Ms. Lisa and Ms. Deborah, do we have any oil business?
No.
All right. Brings us under, under items under new business, do we have any new business?
Uh, yes, sir, we do. We have the horseshoe section of the airport that's still, Mr. Landham is gonna discuss that. He's a little late because I had a board meeting.
All right, we're gonna, can we, I'm gonna hold up on that one to see if Mr. Landham shows up. The county attorney had a emergency board meeting with the school board, so I'm gonna hold back on that one just for that, when he gets in here on the horseshoe section of the airport. Then, that brings us down to... Brings us down to item number 10 under action items. We need to be approved of minutes for the regular board meeting on March the 16th, 2017. You've got the, got those minutes in front of you, and the clerk has sent you those minutes through the computer if you have time to review them. All right, have a move to accept. No, I need, I need a second.
Second.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of the number saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. Those minutes have been approved. That brings us down to item number B under rezone request. We have no rezone requests at this time, Richard? And then, item C, I had mentioned it earlier. Item C is the appointment of the county clerk. We need to do a resolution, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Pickens County, that Lisa Thompson be appointed Pickens County clerk, and needs to be, excuse me, need to be adopted this 20th day of April 2017. I need a move in a second to go ahead and approve that resolution. Lisa Thompson. Lisa Thompson. What did I say?
Thompson.
I'm sorry, Lisa Thompson.
I didn't want to get you out on.
Yeah, what?
I agree.
Thank you. We have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of the number saying aye? None opposed? Congratulations, Lisa. Or condolences, depending on how you wanna look at that. All right. Item D, re-appoint members to the Highland Rivers Health Governing Board of Directors. Have a resolution here, resolution reappointing a member to the Highland Rivers Community Service Board, whereas the term of Allen Wigginton on the Highland Rivers Community Service Board expires June 30th of 2017. And whereas Mr. Wigginton is eligible and has indicated his willingness to serve another term, therefore be it resolved that Allen Wigginton be and is hereby reappointed by the, to the Highland Rivers Community Service Board for a three-year term, beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th of 2020. Need approval from the board for that to happen.
Second.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of the number saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. Allen is not here. Okay, that's fine. Oh, we will draft him. I've been drafted before. Ah, let's see. Item E, resolution adopting an amendment in Chapter 50 of Solid Waste of Dakota ordinances of Pickens County, Georgia. That was the item we tabled last month. If I remember correctly, in your packet, you will see some pictures that have been done. They are timestamped and dated of the, particular one of the issues that we've had going on. And what it boils down to, it's a, it's a resolution to change ordinances for future, for future businesses in Pickens County with their trash dumpsters and all that, to have an enclosure built. This item can also be set up to where it can be retroactive also. The issue we've got with retroactive is businesses that have been in establishment for quite some time that will have to go back and build some sort of a structure to enclose that. Mr. Landham is not here. I'm gonna ask him a question to the point that, there's two, two ways that can be done, I would, I would assume. One of them is to go ahead and pass the resolution as is, or pass the resolution to where it's not retroactive. I just don't know. Or, or could the resolution be passed not to be retroactive, but could be revisited if something, if, if certain individuals didn't abide by the cleanliness of the ordinance that is put forth? I think that is something that, that we need to discuss, or at least see how far a year we wanna go with it, break forth to get it. Richard, you got any, any comment on that either or?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. If the Board of Commissioners chooses to adopt and approve this new language only for new commercial establishments, and under the definition, it would also include multifamily, there would need to be a sentence added to the proposed Section 58-104 Regulation of All Solid Waste or Litter Containers and Receptacles. Currently, as proposed, it reads, "Storage of commercial solid waste outside shall be prohibited except within appropriate enclosures. Refuse areas, dumpsters, shall be placed in the least visible location for public streets and shall be enclosed on all sides by opaque walls with one or more opaque closing gates. The height of opaque walls and opaque closing gates shall be at least as high as the receptacle." An additional sentence would needed, would need to be added, and Mr. Landham could help me with the verbiage, if it's gonna apply only to new developments. And if, the additional sentence could read something like, "This section shall only apply to new developments as of date of adoption, April 20th, 2017."
So, Richard, you're saying the way it reads now, it would, so to speak, grandfather in everybody, unless we put that sentence in there? Is that...
Now, right now, it would be, it would make it, the way I, the way I understand it, and the way you just explained it, is make it retroactive. Any business that's outside of the city limits of Jasper, then would have to comply. The subject could come up to the fact, well, you know, the county wouldn't have to enforce it unless somebody complained, but that's not true. Once you, once you adopt this ordinance, you have to have a timeline set up, whether it's 12 months, 18 months, or two years for every business in Pickens County to comply to the ordinance. So, there's gonna be an issue, that how you interpret it. So, that's, that's the issue we got. Now, while you were coming, the, if we was to vote this in to the fact that we can make it from this point forward, but entities didn't live up to the requirements, can we go back and revisit it and make it retroactive?
You can address this one or two ways. One, as we discussed, one is as a property law. And in that sense, there is no grand fathering of a property law. They have a necessary right to operate their business under the code, under your court warrants that has existed or had, or the issues of their property. This is under your police powers, which is not the fair head of property law. It is the, your responsibility to protect the health of our parents and safety. If you choose to grandfather, basically say, well, unfortunately, considering that is good from this point back, then I don't know, how do you then go back and justify it effectively?
How do you, how do you make, to that point, though, how do you go back and make structures such as some nursing homes? I can, I can, I got some commercial industrial businesses I can bring up that are outside the city limits. They would have, they would have to automatically build a receptacle, container type system.
If you didn't grandfather it.
If we didn't grandfather it then.
And the presumption would be that there would be someone that were common that you would allow them to come in and comply. So, then you also need to address what that penalty would be upon them.
So, in other words, if, say, for instance, they're already operating and having it for 15 years, we pass this ordinance as written, then they would have to comply, wherever that timeline is, they'd have to comply to that ordinance.
Because you're doing it under your police powers.
Well, we have other comments?
I'm sure I filled that up. It's gonna be hard to police anything like that. I mean, you may go from just a 1A home. I was just down there, I didn't go back.
If we go back, I mean, I'm just trying to think in the county, is that going to be a hardship on a large number of people, or is, how do y'all feel about that, to go back?
It depends, if you make them built, but, but how much is this? What are we gonna make the, is, is there any requirement on what they can build?
As y'all have probably noticed, recently, a half enclosure has been placed around the New Dollar General on Cove Road, so that it's not fully enclosed. What they used to partially enclose it, where it screened off from the adjacent residential part, was, you know, whatever material they used, it was opaque. They, and that's exactly how it's written here, too. Even if this new section was put in, it would not have to be split base block, would not have to be brick, would not have to be wood. They could use their own material of choosing, and I've seen it done as cheaply and as expensively as you can imagine, but it would vary.
I think, I need to think a little bit on this and get that down pat, what we're gonna require on the charge.
We tabled it last time. Can we table it one more time? What y'all, if you wanna act on that, even, take it one more time?
I don't know. I'm just thinking.
I believe we taped it. I mean, it's not putting it up. I know it is putting it up, but we wanna make sure everybody's in the same line here.
I think most counties do have this type of ordinance, and I think anybody knowing it going forward, it wouldn't be a big problem to be able to. But also, I'm not that opposed to it just, you know, be in general for the entire county. I mean, it would be...
So, we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be able to do anything inside the city limits of Jasper where it's not allowed.
Right, I mean, yeah.
But outside the periphery. Mr. Barnes has made a motion. I need either second or not.
To just delay it and get more details?
Just delay and get more details.
Like until the next meeting? Sure, second.
All right, have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of the number saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right. That brings us down to item F, approval of the generators. We had put out for bids here approximately two months ago, maybe a little longer, on the, some generator, for a generator for this building and the 911 system to upgrade what we've got. We've had three bid packages come in. Power Solutions Unlimited was $46,400. Caldwell Electric come in $43,000, $53,997. And GenSpring come in $46,800. The closest ones we've got, of course, was Power Solutions and GenSpring, where we stood with the generators. Where we saw with the generators, your Kohler brands, to make the Kohler warranty stay valid, you've got to have a Kohler maintenance per year, for five years, to make this generator warranted. So, Power Solutions Unlimited was $14,400. The first year, they didn't charge, they're not going to charge for that maintenance agreement. The second year will be $1,295. Third year, $1,295. Fourth year, $1,295. Fifth year, $1,295. Which, when you calculate all that together, the $46,400 plus that is $51,580 for a turnkey job over a five-year time. GenSpring Power was $46,800 compared to their $46,400, but the first year on the maintenance agreement, eggs for eggs, was, the first year was free, second year was $525, third year was $525, fourth year was $525, and the fifth year was $525, which brought it up to a total of $48,900. So, Power Systems, when you look at the warranty, what it's going to cost the county over a five-year period for the warranty, to keep the warranty valid, to have a Kohler engineer do the service work, PSU was $51,580, and GenSpring Power was $48,900. And then, of course, Caldwell Electric was $53,997, not even talking about the five-year warranty on top of that, so I didn't even break that down at that point. What is y'all's preference? Both of it now. Power Solutions Unlimited and GenSpring are both Pickens County companies, they're both located here. Caldwell is, I believe, out of Gainesville, I believe, where they're at, if I'm mistaken. And this generator, of course, is designed not only for this building, but to be running the 911 system, because the two generators we've got now are quite antiquated. The one we got running this building is a '68 model, and the one running the 911 center is a, I think it's an 88 model. So, this unit here would then replace both of those units and run on natural gas. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion we use GenSpring.
All right, I have a move to accept the GenSpring's bid. Mr. Barnes?
I have a second.
I have a move in a second for GenSpring's bid at $48,900. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, let go of the saying aye? None opposed, thank you. GenSpring has got the bid on that one, all right? Then that brings us down to item number G, under the park at Yellow Creek. Ms. Timmy, you want to give us an update on the park at Yellow Creek?
Not really, but I wish. As you know, I did get to share this at the work session, but I had been working along with Donnie Craig and Phil Landham, getting some recreation out to the east side in the Yellow Creek area. And Donnie and I went over and met with the members of the Yellow Creek Church, and everything was looking good. And we went back and forth on the contract with Phil on a couple of items, but bottom line, I talked with Mr. Larry Roper, and he informed me that the church had voted not to let us use it for a park, because they are going to do it themselves. And I don't have a backup plan as far as any other land. I'm still thinking about it, but, you know, right now, I'm just very disappointed that it didn't work out.
Well, it's not, if the church comes through and does themselves, it'll still be a win-win for everybody in the area.
It will, if they do it. I hope they do.
All right, thank you for that update. And then, next, we're going down to item H, the bid package for the ambulances. Chief Elrod, you want to give us a quick review of what you're running into?
I will. I gave everybody a folder up there, kind of wrote it down. I apologize that I wasn't, the work session didn't happen, so I wouldn't have presented it there, but basically, I gave you a breakdown on the front, as far as the total price for each. I had one company that only did Dodge, I asked to bid full oil drive Dodge and Fords. I've been speaking to several different people. We kind of got away from Fords, that was all we ran because of the state contract with Ford, you know, they were always cheaper. We started having some issues with some of the motors a few years ago, with the 6O and the 64s. They're now using a 6.7 motor. I have spoken to several different folks, seemed very pleased that I'm seeing them, you know, tear up any more than anything else is, you know, they've been very pleased with them. So, the initial company came in with Southeastern Special Vehicles. They only bid the Dodge, they didn't bid the, they gave me the $115, $120. Now, keep in mind, that is also, I had got with y'all about a new paint scheme that we're looking at. That's if y'all approve the paint scheme, we're going, we'd like to go with the top paint scheme. And I was unable to print that in color to put in y'all's pack, but I've got it here, if y'all want to look at it, pass it. At least kind of feel that since we've merged.
What it does, ladies and gentlemen, we'll leave this up here, but what it does, it makes it look, the ambulance is going to match the fire trucks, because we merged the fire department and the ambulance system, ambulance parts together. So, the paint scheme is going to, both trucks will match out, I guess that's what you're working for.
Right. Now, keep in mind, even if we do approve, then there'll still be six other ambulances that are still painted the old way, we're not just going to paint over one of them right now. We're waiting till we do the same thing. These are all remounts, these are not brand-new trucks. Basically, what a remount is, they take the box off the back that we've been using. Matter of fact, they're 2010s are the ones we're looking at, so we've been using them for six years. They basically make it brand-new, go with whatever paint scheme we want, and just move that box and put it on another chassis, it's a brand-new chassis, and then they just wire it up and go back through the wiring. That's what a remount is, they're actually, you save about $40,000 by doing that. You can only remount them three times, is what they recommend. Some of them, you can only remount two. And we've actually got a set of those that we didn't realize until after they were, we'd already bought them, that they could be remounted, but twice. So, you're still looking at several years, but you'll see the white, the white ones running around also. We don't have any plans of trying to throw that into the woods in any way or shape or form, because I'm all looking the same. Then we had another company out of North Carolina. I've struggled to find a whole lot of information on them, just to be fair with you, but they did bid a Ford and a Dodge. Their Ford came in actually higher than their Dodge, which really doesn't make a whole lot of sense with me, but it was $111,620, and then the Dodge was $110, $120. And then, Custom Works Specialty Vehicles, they were the only ones that are out of Georgia. We used to use Peak State, that was out of Georgia, but they recently got out of business, so. But Custom Works bid the Dodge and a Ford. The Dodge came in at $113,716. The Ford came in at $109,745, and that was with changing the paint scheme and the LED lights. So, basically, the other ones didn't even put in there what I'd asked them to begin with about changing the box over to LED lights. It's the only truck we have that doesn't have LED lights, which saves the alternator, and you don't have to replace the lights near as fast, I mean, so. But the Ford came in at $109,745, which was the cheapest bid all the way around. We have done work with Custom Works. If I could recommend, I would personally, I would recommend Custom Works myself, I understand y'all've got the bid, but.
I just found that a little interesting, unusual, that BMS America has their ink on the Ford and their LLC on the Dodge.
Yeah, and truthfully, like I've said, I was contacted, how that happened, I was actually contacted by one, and they asked if we're still looking for another bid, and I said yes, and this one came across all of a sudden. And I've actually tried to do research on them online, I can't even find this company, it's truthfully, no. But I know there are things, you know, that I could do to come up with three bids, but...
So, what you're looking at is the Custom Works Specialty Vehicles, that company there, and you've got a Ford or a Dodge. Dodge is probably three grand more than the Ford. $113,716 on the Dodge, and $109,745 on the Ford. So, you're buying how many?
Two, we're remounting two. We're remounting two of our 2010 Dodges. That was the original Dodges that we've got since then, everything we've got in our fleet are Dodgers. I mean, it doesn't mean anything to me as far as Ford or Dodge goes. Like I say, I've done, I've contacted several folks and talked about the 6.7 motor.
What's your office's pleasure?
I make a motion we go with Custom Works, Slants recommend motion.
On the Ford, $109,745?
On the Jeep.
What do you do, I'm assuming you buy two Fords since they're about the difference? Barnes?
I have a.
I need a move in a second to approve that.
I'll move.
I'm moving a second, any further discussion? None being all in favor, let go of the saying aye? None opposed, thank you. All right, go, yes.
With the top paint scheme, or?
With the top paint scheme. What is the, and also, before you get asked by the paper, sir, what's your delivery date on that, now that we've approved?
Once the company receives the chassis, we have a 90-day drop down date on that. So, once they receive the chassis, of course, they got to order the chassis, they got to come to them, and then we'll take our two trucks down, we'll take the box off.
What are you going to do, you want to do one truck at a time, or how many trucks you going to have offline?
I'm actually going to try to do one truck at a time. I'm hoping they'll buy both chassis though at the same time, so we don't run into an issue that we have run into in the past. But I don't want to send, you know, two spare trucks down and gosh, the bid, knock on wood, you know, something starts happening with a bid, because what we've got now, and we don't have a spare to get into. So, I would like to, I'd like to do it one at a time.
Have you talked to them about that? Okay. All right, thank you. Now, I'm going to have to back up a second, I kind of put it on hold while Mr. Landham was here at the time. I'm going to back it up to the airport lease, horseshoe section. Mr. Landham, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. We've been working with the airport authority and the development authority, and we've generated a lease that is appropriate to use to lease the sections of the horseshoe. We actually have one tenant that has, that the development authority have voted to execute the lease, except to the airport authorities, approval of the lease form, which they also did in their meeting. The reason why I'm bringing, a couple of reasons to bring this up with y'all. If you remember, portions of that area have been needed from the development authority to the county in transactions that we've had with the development authority with G.M. And the upper two, the upper two-thirds, or I guess the east two-thirds are in the county's name, and the last third is still in the development authority's name. So, a couple of things that I would request. One is that, that you approve the form of the lease as long as you deal with the development authority's approval of it and the airport authority's approval of it. If they'll ever lease, then available and helping us with generating this as well. And then, on the lease that we're looking to execute, probably next week, we don't have a survey of that property yet, that's what we're waiting on, and I don't know if the eastern line of that survey is going to still be in the development authority's area, or if it's going to be in the county's area. I like to keep the landlords consistent, and so, basically, an approval from y'all for the form of the lease, an approval from y'all to sublease the balance of that property to the development authority, so that they, so that their chairman can then execute the leases with the prospective tenants as they come through. I've got a couple of mine that are still working through some details on it, but it really seems to be coming around. So, that would be my request. First of all, I feel any questions you have as far as the terms of the lease. And then, second of all, the action I would make would be approval of the lease form, approval of, and then approval of the delegation of the legal authority to lease the property to the development authority. Basically, the leases are 30-year terms, and we're not, this is an exercise of the government's proprietary function as opposed to governmental function, is how the lease can be more than a year, a calendar year. The rental rate is dictated by the FAA, it's a per foot, and the lease is, the lease is 22 cents per foot, and so, it would just be dependent on how much the survey out. At the end of the 30-year term, any improvements on the property will revert to the development authority. The existing tenant at that time would have the ability to, basically, have a pro-rite of the user to level premises again at that time. There can be an assignment of the lease without the development authority or the landlords concerned. There can, there cannot be a, there can be a sublet about, there cannot be an assignment of the lease that the development authority is concerned. The sublease, they can do without the development authority's concern. The plan, as I understand it, is for the development authority to maintain control of these, they would sublease, they would assign theirs, the recourse to the airport authority. But the development authority wants control of the leases while that debt's still outstanding. Unless that's extinguished, then the airport authority would probably be in control of that, I can't speak for the board, but I think that's what we would.
So, the proceeds would reduce the debt?
The proceeds are supposed to reduce the debt, until that debt's paid off, and then after that, if the airport, after that, the lease will be transferred assigned to the airport authority, and they would use it as income for their, their fund. But first priority is to pay the debt.
Y'all have any questions for that? I would request, before it's voted on, that you would put that in some notes and give it to the new clerk that didn't hear all that.
I'll run it. Just a motion to approve all the lease, and then another motion to delegate to the development authority to give the ability to lease the property.
All right, I need a move, a move in a second to approve the lease. I'm sorry, move? A move in a second, any further discussion? None being all in favor, let go of the saying aye? None opposed, thank you. Now, I need a move in a second for...
To sublease or delegate the ability to lease this property to the development authority.
A move in a second, any further discussion for that? None being all in favor, let go of the saying aye? None opposed, thank you. All right. Now, that brings us down to item number nine, which is the guests and comments. And before we get started on the guests and comments, I'm going to impose on one of my compadres here. I need, which one can I get to read? I like to read this proclamation, I want you all to get with it.
Delegation, just then.
Start it, start it, start it.
Okay. Oh, the very child. May 4th, 2017, Big Canoe National Day of Prayer. On this 20th day of April, 2017, by the mayor of Jasper, Georgia, and the Pickens County Commission, City of Jasper, Georgia, of these great United States of America bring forth a proclamation. Prayer is the mainspring of the American spirit, a fundamental tenet of our people since before the republic was founded. A year before the Declaration of Independence, in 1775, the Continental Congress proclaimed the first national day of prayer as the initial positive action they ask of every colonist. 234 years ago, in 1783, the Treaty of Paris officially ended the long weary Revolutionary War during which a national day of prayer has been proclaimed every spring for eight years. When peace came, the national day of prayer was forgotten.
When peace came, the national day of prayer was forgotten. For almost half a century, as the nation grew in power and wealth, we put aside this deepest expression of American belief, our national dependence on the providence of God. It took the tragedy of the Civil War to restore a national day of prayer. As Abraham Lincoln said, intoxicated with unbroken success, we have become too self-sufficient to feel the necessity of redeeming and preserving grace, too proud to pray to the God that made us. Received as an annual observance by Congress, I'm sorry, revived as an annual observance of Congress, in 1952, the National Day of Prayer has become a great unifying force for our citizens who come from all the great religions of the world. Prayer unites people. This common expressions of reverence heals and brings us together as a nation, and we pray it may one day bring renewed respect for God to all the peoples of the world. From General Washington's struggle at Fort Valley Forge to the present, this nation has fervently sought and received a divine guidance as it pursued the course of history. This occasion provides our nation with an opportunity to further recognize the source of our blessings and to seek His help for the challenges we face today and in the future. Now therefore, we, the Mayor of Jasper, Georgia, and the Pickens County Government Seek and Commissioners for Pickens County in the great state of the beautiful Cherokee Rose, whose motto is Wisdom, Justice, Moderation. While our melody is Georgia on My Mind, as the 13th state in the colonies of the United States of America, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 4, 2017, National Day of Prayer, and affirm the gathering in Big Canoe the same. And therefore, we call upon every citizen of this great country and beyond to gather together on that day in homes and places of worship to pray, each after his or her own manner, for unity of the hearts of all mankind. In witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hand this 20th day of April in the year of our Lord, 2017, and of the independence of the United States of America to 241st. Amen."
I make the move that the commissioner's figure is going to sign the proclamation.
Amen.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion?
Your name is on there, I guess you said.
Or you can say it for John.
Can we come sit and stand with you and get a picture with you signing our proclamation? We are so blessed and thankful. I'd like to introduce you to one of our advisors, Mrs. Wyatt Wood, who has been helping with us. We'd love to invite everyone to come and be with us, and remember the wonderful beauty we have and the gift of prayer and community. Can we stand with you?
Okay.
Yay! No, Wyatt, you can do it here now, Mr. Wyatt. Wyatt, come on.
Not sure much.
Thank you.
Just smile.
That's good enough, Karen.
Oh, we thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it, Jerry.
Thank you, sir, and you've got to come, Neil.
We'll, we'll do our best.
All right.
See, I'm going to have my, my secretary make me copy this.
Thank you. And if you'd like, I'll, and I can pick it up and take it to the mayor, because I think he wasn't here tonight, so he's going to sign it. Thank you.
Give me a little one. Yes, I'll look.
I'll talk to her. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. That brings us, now we're in the, any comments? Yes, sir?
When Moses led the people of Israel out of Egypt, and they came to Mount Sinai, Moses went up on the mountain to receive the law, and left on their own, the people of Israel fell away. And they formed what I call the Back to Egypt Committee. They decided that being slaves wasn't so bad. They had roof over their head, food in their belly, and everything was fine. Well, Moses came down and convinced them otherwise, because the Lord got punished at the time, and they were able to move forward into the promised lands and in order to manage. Now, Pickens County is growing. It's growing and it's changing. And in order for us to live together as a county that's moving from primarily a rural county to a rural residential combination, you know, of a county, we've got to have some guidelines on how we're going to live together. Now, nobody wants to limit the growth of businesses in Pickens County. I'm a conservative, a Republican. I love business, right? But on the other hand, with the behavior of the businesses that we've had, well documented over the years, these businesses just don't seem to be able to regulate themselves to get their act cleaned up. Now, nobody wants them to go out and build fancy brick-and-mortar enclosures around these things that are going to cost thousands of dollars. You go right down here to Walgreens, behind Walgreens, you'll see a very nice chain link and board fence situation that didn't probably cost any more than 1,500 bucks to put together. Nobody in these businesses is going to miss that kind of money. Nobody's going to go out of business or not be able to make their bills to put up an enclosure like that. Matter of fact, the one that's recently been built at the Dollar General, one of the corner stores for me, would be fine if they just enclosed it on all four sides. So now, I think it would be reasonable for you to put a reasonable period of time in the ordinance for them to come into alignment. And I'm talking about existing businesses and businesses that are, that are new. Now, we need some guidance here. You know, if the Environmental Protection Agency hadn't forced Ford Motor Company and these other big businesses, well, they were polluting the hell out of New Jersey, right? The people in New Jersey would still be living with polluted properties, right? And that's, that's, that's your function. You've got to keep us out of the Back to Egypt behavior, and you've got to move us forward to the promised land. And in order to do that, not only for solid waste disposal, but for light privacy and for visual privacy and for noise privacy, these are areas where our surrounding counties have acted and we haven't acted. So what I'm asking for you guys to do is to get up and leave here. We've got to move forward. We can't look back, in my opinion. And if you think that these businesses are going to continue to try and be, quote, better out of the goodness of their heart, I've got a bridge in Brooklyn I want to sell you. They're not going to do it without some guidance and some rules set up by the county commissioners. So that's what we're asking you to do. Put some reasonable rules, give them a reasonable amount of time to comply with those rules, and, and put up some, and they don't need to be fancy. They can be wood, they can be chain link, they can be whatever they want. Reasonable enclosures around these properties.
So then, as we come forward to make that happen, we have got to try to come to some sort of enforcement. When it doesn't happen, to come up with some sort of fines to make them go into alignment.
Absolutely. That's where I was going next. And I think, you know, Jared, you're right. It's not well-defined the way it is. It needs to have some enforcement parameters put in there, so when your enforcement agents come out and say, hey, you're not in, in, you know, in alignment with the law, you've got some penalty. I agree, it needs to be taken, and I think it's a good move. But we need to have some reasonable regulations to get them to do the right thing, in my opinion.
And I hope and pray that since Moses did come up from Mount Sinai, you know, they, they marched in the desert for 40 years, maybe it won't take as long to get this one completed.
I'm getting a lot within the promised land. I think we can do it, and I, and you've got plenty of community volunteers that would gladly work with you. We're proud of you.
Yes, sir.
You have in there in the HB, called, you're supposed to protect the building property with bushes and various things. One thing that is not in any of the ordinance is the elevation of adjacent property. I'm sitting 15 feet, 20 feet above the Dollar General, and an eight-foot fence doesn't help. So there needs to be something in there where the, depending on the location of a joint property, that something can be done about it.
Of all the people on our county, this man is the one that is the most negatively affected by that storm. The visual appearance of his property, he's already had people that he's been trying to sell the home to leave and say, we don't want to go here because of what it looks like. So this is the kind of guy that would be going to attack right here. He's probably going to lose $50,000 on the.
I'm looking down at that detention pond full of water right now, and it, it's dangerous because there's parking lot right there, and somebody says to the kids, why don't you go back to the car? They could just go walk in the car if they want to. And I thought it's supposed to be drainage each time, have a detention instead of retention.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I draw, I'd like to, we have a doctor that related to churches.
Pardon, I'm sorry.
We have a doctor.